Praise the Lord. I want to contribute from the introduction. God's mandate upon the church, that is we, the Christians. From the introduction, I come to understand that the problem of our society is not God. God is very ready to help us. He's very ready to change all this corruption. But God is looking for a man that he will use. And the church is not helping. The church is still sleeping. You and I, you have practiced church enough without impact. And that's the reason why God is calling us in a time like this, to raise army that will stand in the gap. Men like Danai, that will change their territory. Sisters like Esther, Deborah, that will stand in their generation like this and say, "No, this thing cannot continue like this. Unless we stand, we will continue to remain in this kind of condition." I pray that God will help us, in Jesus' name.
Any other person? Yes? Want to say something? From the introduction? Okay.
Praise the Lord. Um, from the introduction here, I think I'm meant to understand that there is a mandate, a mandate given to the church, to get repented. It's not here. A lot of things has to be done. So if such mindset is not being embedded in me, I cannot do that. So there is every need for me to be aware of this, so that I will bear it in mind and make sure that the commission, which had already been commissioned to me, will be achieved. Praise the Lord.
Yes, any other person? You can tell me that nobody got something? Between ten and fifteen, choose a number. Ten or fifteen? Twelve, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Oh yeah, tell us something from there. Be fast. Alleluia. From the introduction, tell us something.
Okay, um, from introduction, okay, what I can see is that there's an assignment God has given to the church. And yesterday we established that the church is not a denomination. I am the church, she's the church. We are individually, we are the church. So that means there's a commission, there's an assignment that God has given me. And not fulfilling it means not going in line with God's plan and purpose for my life.
Okay, finally. Okay, help our sister. Our sister wants to say something.
Praise the Lord.
Alleluia.
From a text in Revelation sixteen, verse fourteen, it says, "For they are the spirit of devils, working miracles, which go forth unto the king of the earth." So what I can see from there is that God has given us a mandate as the church. The mandate is simply to win souls. So if we try to do anything extra, like in some churches, what they major on is working of miracles, seeing of visions and all of that, is aside from what God wants us to do.
Alleluia. That's great. One striking thing that I think for myself that is so necessary in this, what was it called, in this Bible study is that I saw it said a definite evangelism is a definite warfare, to lead a definite, that's what sinner or soul that is embedded in sin, to accept Jesus Christ at a definite time and bring him to the into God's kingdom. There I understood that everything that God wants, that's the Great Commission, is definite. It's within a timeframe, it's a particular thing, it's a part, everything is so detailed. You can't, it's not something that is just anyhow. That's why we need to be more careful in executing it. That's one thing that struck me. If it's a definite warfare, that means it's something that is, we must do. It's something that must happen and it's so crucial and necessary. And also, not that it's just a definite warfare, it's for somebody definite. There are people who are waiting for us as Christians to pull them out from fire. And that's the fact. And another thing is that it is within a definite time. There's a time that you would miss someone, that you not get the person again. As you mean someone is allocated to you like we are in a school system where it's four years, five years, and two years, as the case may be. And you are to meet someone within that timeframe. If you don't meet the person, what will happen? The time has gone. So it's definite, it's definite. That's what struck me very well from this introduction. And I think my mind is now reawakening to what God wants us to do when it concerns the mandate. And what is this mandate? What is this mandate? Let's say it together. Let's say it together again. Soul winning is the mandate. We should win soul. Everybody, nobody is exempted. Everybody, as far as you are in the church, you should win a soul. The question is, have you won a soul? You are seated there, have you won a soul? It's already kicking on us because this is the mandate God wants us to. And it's an official authority or command, commission, and induction to do something. We must do it. Let us run. Question for discussion. Discuss briefly in your own understanding, the church or believer's mandate. Revelations one, verse two to three. The next person should take that. The next person, four to six. The next person, first John one, verse one to four. We know how we are moving now. So when it's your turn, you take the next place. And then, please, can you help us with the microphone over there?
Okay, first John, chapter one, from verse one to four, it says, "That which was from the beginning, which we have heard, which we have seen with our eyes, which we have looked at and our hands have touched, this we proclaim concerning the word of life. The life appeared; we have seen it and testified to it; and we proclaim to you the eternal life, which was with the Father and has appeared to us. We proclaim to you what we have seen and heard, so that you also may have fellowship with us. And our fellowship is with the Father and his Son, Jesus Christ. We write this to make our joy complete." First John, chapter five.
First John, five.
From verse eleven, and it says, "And this is the testimony God has given us eternal life; and this life is in his Son. He who has the Son has life; he who does not have the Son of God does not have life."
To read, that should be thirteen and twenty. Read thirteen and, have you read it? Give it to her to, give it back to her to read.
First John five, thirteen and twenty. "These things have I written unto you, that believe on the name of the Son of God, that he may know that he hath eternal life, and that he may believe on the name of the Son of God," verse twenty. "And we know that the Son of God is come and hath given us an understanding, that we may know him that is true, and we are in him that is true, even in his Son, Jesus Christ. This is the true God and eternal life."
Matthew twenty-eight, nineteen. "Go therefore and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and the Holy Spirit, teaching them to observe all things that I have commanded you; and lo, I am with you always, even to the end of age."
Acts, chapter one, verse eight, and it says, "But you shall receive power after the Holy Spirit has come upon you; and you shall be witnesses unto me, both in Jerusalem and in all Judea, and in Samaria, and unto the uttermost parts of the earth."
Roman, chapter ten, thirteen to eighteen. It says, "For whosoever shall call upon the name of the Lord shall be saved; how then shall they call upon him, in whom they have not believed? And how shall they believe in him of whom they have not heard? And how shall they hear about a preacher, without a preacher? And how shall they preach, except they be sent, as it is written? How beautiful are the feet of them that preach the gospel of peace and bring glad tidings of good news?"
Okay, finally. Isaiah fifty-two.
God that has given us this faith, has given us a mandate to be able to sensitize, carry the same preaching that you've been, that you've received, and then send it to others, so they might be received, they might receive the same faith and then serve the same God. Praise the Lord.
Okay.
Praise the Lord. So from this, okay, from John and also from Matthew. You know, God saved us, God has saved us as Christians. That we are in the church means that we are a body of Christ, having the same belief, having, understanding the same thing and having the same belief. And so it is, the mandate of God is for us to go outside and also tell people about the love of God. Tell people outside there that are perishing, that God loves us. And that is the reason why he brought his Son, Jesus Christ, to die for us. And that the only way they can be saved is if they receive Jesus as their Lord and personal Savior. Then after that, after salvation, then we empower them to the Holy Spirit. We empower them. That's the mandate I'm seeing. Praise the Lord.
Okay.
Praise the Lord. From where I did Matthew. "Therefore make disciples of all nations." First, I think the believer's mandate is soul winning. Soul winning, which is evangelism, when we go for evangelism. But also, I think it does not end in soul winning. Because there it says, "teaching them to observe all that I do," right? Yes, so when, when we win these souls into the body of Christ, we also have to, there's a place of, that's a place of follow-up. We teach them until they conform to the life of Christ. Amen.
Amen. Okay, I think we would stop that, stop here. So before I continue, this mandate, I want to ask a question. Is there anybody here that is not happy being a Christian? Okay, you are happy being a Christian, can you wave your hands to Jesus? Some people are not happy. I'm seeing how they are slowly raising their hand. Don't worry, we will not loud it. But the thing is that if you are happy, don't you think it's necessary that other people come into that same faith and also be happy? See, there is nobody that would, maybe they are running from Ihube, down to this side, they are killing people there. And then, as they are running away from there, you now see people that are walking there laughing and going. You tell them, "Oh yeah, see you, continue going." Is anybody who would do that kind of a thing? The thing is that by the time you see them, you start persuading them. Come out, come out, don't go there, don't go there, whether they choose to go there at the end of the day or not. If, uh, we enjoyed that kind of film along this Okiwue Utru road. A driver would just march break and turn steering. Everybody will follow suit, whether something is happening in front or not. The reason is because they know that something is happening there that is not normal. So therefore, everybody say, "Agala, agala, agala." The question is that, do you know what this mandate is? How are we even carrying it? Somebody in your class has not received Jesus, don't you think that they are suffering? They are passing through this. That's why we need to know. That's why we need to understand. That's why we need to put all our resources to make sure that these people hear about Jesus. That's the mandate. And it does not just stop at the place of preaching. The mandate continues. If you see from Matthew, it says discipling people. I know some of us, we, we don't want to be very vocal when it comes to talking to people or building people up. But I think it's heightened that we know that it's part of the mandate. Raising people up for God. Before I leave my school, I must raise somebody up for God. Before I leave this environment, I must raise somebody up for God. That is what is the mandate is. Okay, we'll run to the next place. It's, it would be better that we have extra time to give more contribution than to be late. It's, okay, question two. Is believers, or that's church, mandate a prophetic agenda to be fulfilled during the coming of our Lord Jesus? Discuss. Let me read again. Is believers, that's church, mandate a prophetic agenda to be fulfilled before the coming of our Lord Jesus? Discuss. Malachi four, five to six, Matthew seventeen to ten, that's seventeen, ten to eleven. Then we just take that seriously. Please, be sensitive to where your friend is reading so that you also continue likewise.
Praise the Lord.
Alleluia.
Behold, I will send Elijah, the prophet, before the coming of the great and joyful day of the Lord; and he shall turn the heart of the Father to the children, and the heart of the children to their fathers. Please, I come and smear the earth with its cost.
Matthew seventeen, ten to eleven. Then his disciple asked him, "Why, why do the teachers of religious law insist that Elijah must return before the Messiah comes?" Jesus replied, "Elijah is indeed coming first to get everything ready."
Matthew twenty-four, verse fourteen. "And this gospel of the kingdom shall be preached in all the world for a witness unto all nation; and then shall the end come."
Okay, maybe we would stop there. Can we start contributing? So if you, if you want to still read other passages and contribute from there, that's okay too. But you can contribute, yes. Help him with the microphone. Don't worry. No, we need it, we need it. We are online. We are online.
Okay. Okay, okay. So, um, I want to say that the answer is yes.
Okay.
Uh, if you understand, um, what, uh, the question one asks, if you understand the believer's mandate, if you understand that the believer's mandate is all about the Great Commission, with Matthew chapter twenty-eight, you then know that that is prophetic.
Had to be fulfilled before the coming of Christ. Because once Christ come, there is no more fulfillment of any prophecy. Once Christ come, there will be no more repentance, is he not it? People that will now, um, after, um, the Great Tribulation, after Christ has taken up with his people, the people that will remember, which Bible tell us that they will have to pay with their blood? Even though we don't have virtually, the possibility is very slim. So it is a prophecy that has to be fulfilled before Christ come. This is, it is now that you need to preach to die your brother, that you need to preach to die your sister, to give his life to Christ. Because when Christ must have come, there will be no such opportunities again. Praise the Lord.
Alleluia. Yes, I need someone else. Someone else, so that we move. Any other person? Okay? In the absence of any other person, I think our brother has answered it. Yes, it's prophetic. It was spoken about, even some persons had to come to bring some kind of, you know, this pharisees answered this kind of question. Is it, is it? And Jesus also answered them that yes. Somebody must come to make the church ready before he's coming. And if it must happen, somebody should do something about it. And it has been spoken. So that means we can play that role to make that happen. The word of God must be spread across the, through the ends of the earth before he's coming. So that means somebody must do that. It will not just start spreading by itself, it's by the working of persons. And if it has been prophetically said, it will also come to pass. So when it comes to pass, then the coming of the Lord will happen. So it's prophetic and it will definitely happen. Okay, we move. Where is the place of SCF Nigeria?
Gather together all whom they found, both bad and good. And the wedding hall was filled with guests.
Okay, the next place, Acts twenty-six.
Acts twenty-six. Praise the Lord.
Alleluia.
Acts twenty-six, thirteen to, if I read. "About, about noon, King Agripa, as I was on the road, I saw a light from heaven, brighten than the sun, blazing around me and my companion. We all fell to the ground, and I heard a voice saying to me in Arabic, 'So, so, why do you persecute me? It is hard for you to kick against the God.' Then I asked, 'Who are you, Lord?' 'I am Jesus, who you are persecuting.' The Lord replied, 'Now get up and stand on your feet. I have prepared to you, to appointed you as a servant and a witness of what you have seen and we see of me. I will rescue you from your own people and from the Galilee, and from the Gentiles. I am sending you to them to open their eyes and to turn them from darkness to light and from the power of Satan to God, so that they may receive forgiveness of sin and a place among those who are sanctified by faith in me.'"
Okay, then we, and we stop at second Timothy four, one to six.
Second Timothy four, one to six. "I charge thee therefore before God and the Lord Jesus Christ, that who shall judge the quick and the dead at his appearing and his kingdom. Preach the word, be instant in season, out of season; reproach, rebuke, exalt with all long-suffering and doctrine; for the time we call when they will not endure sound doctrine; but after their own lusts shall they heap to themselves teachers, having teaching ears; and they shall turn away their ears from the truth and shall be turned into babes, into fables. But watch thou in all things; endure affliction; do the work of an evangelist; make full proof of thy ministry; for I am now ready to be offered, and the time of my departure is at hand."
Okay, um, can we contribute? Yes. You have not raised your hand. Just raise your hand, I will not call, so I will call you, but not straightforward. Like, say something. Yes? Yes, sir. Please help. Help, help, help him with the microphone. Yes.
Praise the Lord.
Alleluia.
According to that Matthew chapter twenty-two, nine to ten. It's talking about we should go inside the streets and gather guests. And gather guests and preach to them, so that you do souls to Christ. As an SCF member, you should go to the streets and gather members, gather souls to Christ and preach to them. Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. I would like to contribute on this particular question from our SCF slogan. Think SCF.
Pray SCF.
Pray SCF.
Act SCF.
Act SCF.
Yes, move this though.
So the question is, how many of us are still into missions work and school visitation? The essence of this question is for us to understand that in schools, secondary schools, primary schools, and missions work whereby we go to villages and activities to preach to people. Remember that the Bible says, "This word of God has gotten to every part of the earth; then the fulfillment of this promise is not yet done." So it is left for us, SCF. At least in our schools, I know we have missions group. You join them and become part of it if you cannot preach on your own. If you become part of them, you will learn how to talk to people. And you learn how to talk to them, even in your friends, your, your friends, the classrooms and everything. This, the mandate of SCF is to preach out to people and act SCF and to pray SCF. So from communication to people, you will learn how to preach and do the one that is in your hands. Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. According to where we read, Matthew chapter twenty-two, verse ten, and Matthew twenty-nine, verse twenty. The place of SCF Nigeria, when it comes to soul winning, is the work of an evangelist. We all, SCF member, we are to do the work of an evangelist. That is, we are to bring souls to the kingdom of God. Remember, the Bible says that the heavens rejoice over one soul that you bring. So each soul you bring is like, you are, you are just like adding to your crown, to your glory. So other work of, other work of SCF in the agenda, that is prophetic agenda is, we are witnesses of Christ. We are Christ-like, so we are the witnesses of, we are just to go and bear witness of the life Christ lives and just to bring souls to the kingdom. Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
Alleluia.
I want to comment from Matthew twenty-two. Um, where Jesus spoke about wedding. You see, wedding is what, what that holds within a specified period of time. So after that time, wedding will end. And Jesus instructed his men, his servants, "Go there. Get people, call, invite them for the wedding." When they went there, the people refused to come. Until when Jesus told them, "Go there, anybody you see, invite that person. Whether that person is bad or good, invite that person, invite anybody." The same thing should happen to us while we are in campus. So you don't discriminate, even while you are walking on the walkway and you hear a voice, look at that person by her eye, talk to him, talk to her. Please, there is every need for us to respond to that call. Because when we fail to respond, another extraordinary thing may happen in which that may affect us. So even God had, Jesus had instructed, oh, there's every need, no matter where you find yourself. Whether you are in bedroom, you are taking your bath, even if you are in toilet, whatever thing you have been instructed to do at that moment, do it. Apart from that time, anything can happen. Praise the Lord.
I just want to ask this question. Has anybody been in the situation where you were instructed by God or you had this press in your heart to talk to someone about Jesus? If you have experienced that, let me see your hand. Because some people have not experienced it. Are you serious? You have not experienced it before, a press to tell somebody about Jesus? In Jesus' name, receive that, that unshone to be pressed by the Lord. Amen. So, okay, you want to give a contribution? Please, make it snappy.
Praise the Lord. Yeah, I read from us, the mandate and the place of SCF. God begin to tell, "Oh, I'm sending you to your people to go and preach to them about Jesus." So SCF as a unique fellowship in campus, God is sending us there to let people know about him. It's not only, as far as you are a member of SCF, you are a soul winner. It's not less for only A schools. Both class-to-class evangelism, both to lodge-to-lodge evangelism, department evangelism, and also work, school's work, that is our calling. So don't say it's only for A schools, don't limit it. As far as you are an A school member, you are a school what visitor.
Yeah, so that's that. So we need to move. And another thing that we should know is that all of this is time bound. As our daddy said, time bound, time, time. The wedding happens only on the day of the wedding. After the day of the wedding, it will not happen again. Before the day of wedding, let's go and send as many invitation cards that we can. Send as many, anyhow, whether you know how to put it or not. The Bible says, "Just go inside." The Bible said, just go inside, just rush in, rush in and start telling people about Jesus, it's time bound. Because that person who will not give that invitation card may not be there. And I, I, what of if you are the one that were, you were not giving a, an invitation card for this wedding that you would have attended? Chi, how will you feel? Please, let's not make these persons to be crying. Chi, God will help us. What should be our message to the dying soul? Matthew four thirteen to seventeen, Acts eight, four to eight. I think these are the words that we think. And then, um, the other words, you can just go through it and then pick something from it, yes?
Matthew four thirteen to seventeen. When Jesus heard that John had been arrested, he left Judea and returned home to Nazareth in Galilee. But soon he moved to Capanion beside the lake of Galilee, close to Zebulun and Naphtali. This fulfilled Isaiah's prophecy. The land of Zebulun and the land of Naphtali beside the lake and the countryside beyond the Jordan river and upper Galilee where so many foreigners lived. There the people who sat in darkness have seen a great light. They sat in the land of death and the light broke through upon them. From then on, Jesus began to preach, turn from sin and turn to God, for the kingdom of heaven is near.
So from there, from there, what do you think? From there, tell us, tell us quickly. We don't have time, that's why we will do it this way.
Okay, our message to the dying souls, we should tell them to fall from sin and turn to God.
Chi, be more vocal, you said.
I said, our message to the dying souls that we should tell them to fall from sin and turn to God.
Turn from sin. Okay, read the next passage, then give us the derivatives from it.
Acts chapter eight from verse four to eight. Therefore, they that were scattered abroad went everywhere preaching the word. Then Philip went down to the city of Samaria and preached Christ to them. And the people with one accord gave it to those things which Philip spoke, hearing and seeing the miracles which he did. For unclean spirits crying with loud voice came out of many that were possessed with them. And many taken with policies and that were lame were healed, and there was great joy in that city. So our message to the dying souls, it's draw them to Christ, tell them about Jesus. And in that process too, we can help and deliver them from any problem that they are in, praise the Lord.
Okay, uh, finally. Please, let's be fast, let's be fast.
Praise the Lord. I just read through, um, first Corinthians two, verse two. I'll just read it, it says, for I determined not to know anything amongst you except Jesus Christ and him crucified. So I think the message to a dying soul is just Christ. We don't need to go and start preaching about your dressing, introduce the person to Christ and everything will follow suit, amen.
Okay, the message of, uh, this is, Jesus only is our message. You not dwell here so much, please, um, fast forward our contributions to the next, so that we would cover up. Please, we, we go in who are qualified to engage in this church mandate, who are qualified? And but before we answer, is anybody that feels like Jesus, telling someone about Jesus is not enough a message? You don't think that telling somebody about Jesus is enough a message? Some people feel like they should add some, um, sweeteners and all of that. By the time you study the life of Christ, okay, what say something about that? Okay. Help us, help us, be, let's, let's be agile.
Uh, what, I want to add something dear. Uh, I know Jesus is the main message, but there is what we call charisma. Charisma in preaching the gospel. So there are people, uh, you in, introduce Jesus immediately and they will rise up against you. So you know the method, you know the approach, okay.
Think it's, it's there already. So but the main message is Jesus.
Jesus, in Jesus.
Other things that we need to use, um, to do that, okay. So Jesus is enough message, don't go and look for extra. Jesus is enough message. So I think when we reach chapter four, we see how we can use, um, handle this, um, message. That's, um, Jesus has a message in, um, question four. So which people are qualified to engage in this church mandate, who are qualified? Is it just for one special set of persons? Anybody who have read those passages yet? Read, 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 read. No, 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 we have.
John chapter one, verse twelve, and he say, but to all who receive him, who believe in his name, he gave power to become children of God.
So which people are?
It's, it's for those that have received him and believe in him.
Receive and believe in Jesus, that's that, yes?
John three sixteen. For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whoever believes in him should not perish but have everlasting life. So, um, those that are qualified for the mandate, those that have received Christ as their Lord and personal Savior.
Okay.
Acts one, verse eight, but you shall receive power when the Holy Spirit has come upon you and you shall be witnesses to me in Jerusalem and in Judea and Samaria and to the end of the earth.
Okay, which people are qualified?
Those, those that have received, um, power, like, when the Holy Spirit comes upon them. And the Holy Spirit cannot come upon you when you have not believed in the name of Jesus.
Okay, simple. Everyone that believes, everyone that has received Jesus, they are the ones to engage. If you have done these things, you are to engage. Do you know why I don't want to talk about power yet? Because as soon as you believe and as soon as you receive, the thing that follows immediately from John one, verse twelve, it was power. So if you are not exercising your power, you are consciously doing that. It's not, it's not that, um, the power is not there, he has given it. What you should do is tap into that power and make use of it. So believing and, um, receiving Jesus is what we need to do to engage in this church mandate. So that you don't, you don't need anything extra, you don't need anything, um, maybe you need to have the calling of a pastor, my son, my son, go open one church, it's a lie. As far as you have Jesus in you, you have received and believed in Jesus, you are qualified to engage in this church mandate. So what are the factors, tools and methods that can help us effectively and efficiently fulfill this mandate? Let's discuss. Um, we will read, um, Matthew, Matthew nine thirty-five to thirty-eight. I want to say, let's read John four, verse one to forty-two. It's a very striking, um, passage, but we may not read it. It's a story about the woman of Samaria, uh, Samaria. So it's, it's, that's the story, how Jesus, if you have done your follow-up, you should understand this story very well in soul winning and practice. This should be a very sim, um, easy peasy for us, if you have done your follow-up. That should be study seven in our manual, study seven. So, yes?
Matthew nine thirty-five to thirty-eight. And Jesus went about all the cities and villages, teaching in their synagogues and preaching the gospel of, of the kingdom and healing every sickness and every disease among the people. But when he saw the multitude, he was moved with compassion on them, because they fainted and were scattered abroad as sheep without no shepherds. He said unto his disciples, the harvest is plentiful and the laborers are few. Pray you therefore, the Lord of the harvest, that he may send forth laborers into his harvest.
So can we, um, from there, tell us something?
The factors from here now is factors of that can help us carry this in is prayer, number one. You have to pray, you have to pray. Then one of the tools is, as you are praying, when you see those that are sick, those that are in help, that need your help, that need your healing, you should pray for them, that they might receive healing, praise God.
Hallelujah, praying an essential tool, yes? Please, we may not read all the passages. So please, you can pick one of those passages and buttress on those points. I think we would, um, um, take this last one, first Corinthians two, two. We've read it before, but let's take it again.
It says, for I resolved to know nothing ab, uh, for I resolved to know nothing while I was with you except Jesus Christ and him crucified.
So what's the tool, what's the factor that can help us effectively fulfill the mandate? Yes, someone, yes, give to the lady there. So from there, you will see that knowledge, knowledge, I, for I, I don't have any, I must know. From that place you read now, knowing, knowledge, if you know, what you know is what you can defend. There is a little test that was given to us during our students camp in Abba. They asked what is ubiquitous, who knows what it is, ubiquitous? Okay, I see many persons were lost, except two persons. Ubiquitous means that it's everywhere. If you don't know, you don't know. So knowledge, when you know about Jesus, can't study about Jesus, for you have not soul lent Christ. So when you know about Jesus, you can tell anybody about Jesus, yes, ma?
Can I, um, I want to speak from Acts fifteen fourteen, can I read it or should I just say?
You could tell us, just give us your deducts.
Okay, yeah, I'm seeing consistency.
Consistency, wow.
Just do so and go, you should be consistent in this work.
Okay, consistency, consistency, where should we keep it at? Is it a tool, a factor? I think consistency should be a factor, yes, it's a factor, yes?
Another one, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking from second Corinthians, chapter five, verse fourteen.
Okay.
There he talked about your life, that once you have received Christ as your Lord and personal Savior, you should be dead to old things. So that particular lifestyle that people have known you for that is negative, once you're dead to it and you're not preaching to someone else and say, oh, this I do before, I do them no more, I have Jesus in me. It's a method of evangelizing, it's one of the methods.
Okay, yes.
Praise the Lord. Okay, um, I, one of the factors I saw here is the love of God. When we have the love of God, like our teacher was saying, when you love Jesus, you love God, like, you always be moved. Anytime you just see something is wrong, you see someone, you just be uncomfortable, you just want to tell the person about God then. Another thing for the tools I saw is, um, so, first Corinthians nine twenty-two said, to the weak, I became as weak, that I might win the weak. I have become all things to all men, that I might by all means sa, save some. So when we see people in need, when we see, okay, there was someone I knew, there's someone I know that she used to, she, she used to reach out to these people, they called tomboys. So whenever she sees someone like that and, and she knows how to rapport with them, so she would just be like, ah, get her phone, like, just being as if she wants to do like them and then they will be free with her. Then in no distant time, they are friends and she will be shaping the word of God. So when we meet people like that, like, we can reach out to people like, uh, like the Bible said, those that are weak, we became weak that we might be able to reach out to them, praise the Lord.
Yes, sir.
According to Ephesians six, verse nineteen, and for me that all thorns may be given unto me, that I may open my mouth boldly to make known the ministry of the gospel. You know, most of times, one of the problems most of us have is that, maybe when we are preaching, all of a sudden we find out that we can, we don't know what else to say. We, we now lack words, or maybe in the midst of preaching, someone asks you a question, you don't know what else to say. Then if God doesn't give you what to say at that time, you may end up not saying things that are out of the context of what you are trying to preach. And again, boldness, most of us, we know what to preach, but the boldness to talk is not the problem.
That, that place, let me just buttress on that, boldness, boldness, and then open your mouth. That's the two things I saw from that passage very well. Open your mouth, you cannot close your mouth and you want someone to receive Jesus and boldly do that. Boldness does not mean you know everything that you want to even say, that's the truth. It's just that your charisma, your, your.
Please, teachers, you have thirty-eight minutes more, please, thirty-eight minutes more. So if you have not answered some questions, please go down, please.
I love your boldness, boy, I love your boldness. So be bold, be bold, and God will help us, yes?
One of another tools I saw there is a testimony, testimony.
Yes.
From John, that John you read, because of the testimony of the woman, others believe. So our testimony will also draw men to God. You know, some of us, when they ask us, how are you doing? They say nothing, nothing, you always. Demoralize people, always be positive, always, it will help to draw souls to God.
Okay, we need to run now. So another thing I want to bring is giftings. Your giftings, gifts of the Holy Spirit. Help me with the microphone over to the side. So the giftings of the Holy Spirit, what gift do you have? What gift do you have? You want to say something?
No, about the same thing.
Okay, okay. So what giftings do you have? If you have a gift, if you have a gift, use it. The gift of prophecy, the gift of encouragement, the gift of giving, the gift of, can we help us name the giftings of the Holy Spirit? The gift of, um, yes? Word of wisdom, word of knowledge, what again? Everything, even the gift of speaking in diverse kind of tongues. Some, 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 um, unbelievers has had the tongues and say, what is, what vibrates, what resonates in us? And trying to know, they know Jesus. So our giftings can play a very important role for us. Thirty-eight minutes, okay. So, okay, yes.
Another thing I want to add here is, uh, if you read Luke chapter ten, verse one to two. There you see that Christ was sending his disciples, two, 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 two. So I'm trying to portray there like, one of the methods, one of the methods or ways we can use in evangelism is by two, two. Most times when we are one, it doesn't give us this full encouragement to preach about the gospel. But when we are being sent or when we are together like two, three, this was this boldness and this belief to talk to people about Christ, hallelujah.
Going twos, going twos, very important. So also if you look at the life of, um, Jesus and the Samaritan woman, you see that Jesus started with a natural conversation. You cannot just go and miss somebody. I remember what somebody said, I said, give your life to Christ. If you don't, um, give your life to Christ, you will die, if you don't die, I fly. Imagine I kind of, um, preaching. No, actually, he did it in, in SCF, I assume, morning cry. Like, somebody came to someone's room, I say, give your life to Christ, if you don't give your life to Christ, you will die. If you, you will, uh, die, if you don't die, I fly. So that kind of, I know it's very sharp and all of that, we laughed, we laughed, uh, some, uh, God is good. Learn how to interact, communication can help you to tell somebody. You are, you, you eat bag of beans, man do to tag a beans, so roya to cha di beans. Tell God, eh, can, do you imagine eating these beans with this stone in it? What of if God picks out all the things that are troubles in your life? Oh, why be in school, no bagow? But you have turned it to something they say. Allow the Holy Spirit to help you navigate, just allow him. And from there, you tell them about Jesus, everything points to Jesus, that's what I've noticed. I've not seen any, just any topic you bring now, bring it, even by chemistry. Even chemistry, bring chemistry now. You just say the atoms, when you are volatile, anything can enter, but when you are saturated, nothing will enter. Chemistry have entered like that, just that way. Whatever course of study, use it, navigate, use what you like, turn everything to a message. Don't, don't be stereotypic, flow. And we see God will start opening, the Bible said, he will give us what to say by time. That means God is ready for us. So learn how to, don't be just this person that they have put in one mode and you cannot navigate. Find their best way to interact with people. You know, this person is hot temper, they give a cool, cool that will make the person to trip off immediately. Just restart and, uh, if you greet the person, you say, mommyo, mommyo, daddy, eh? No, by the time you help this person very well, the person will be like, ah, what is that and all of that. You see this person start engaging you in a conversation and at the end of the day, you pass that message. So God will help us, let's run. Are there barriers to church mandate? Are there barriers? Are there things that are stopping us? Yes, someone asked, yes?
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah, we contribute, just read the passage, sorry, read the passage and contribute from there. If you want to contribute, you raise your hand, yes?
I'll be contributing from Revelation twelve nine and Mark four fifteen.
Okay.
It's not enough that we preach the gospel. One important thing is, yes, after, after believing in God, it's so winning and everything. Um, are you able to actually put what you've learnt into practice? That is where that, um, Mark four fifteen came in, okay, so Revelation, where God had to throw Satan down to the earth and all of those things. I think one of the barriers to this whole so winning stuff is sin. Because it's not enough to preach the gospel. Can you be able to resist those temptation when they come your way? Praise the Lord.
Sin is a barrier, yes. Raise your hand as soon as you have something, God has dropped something, please.
I'm going to be talking from Matthew ten fourteen. Another barrier to this church mandate is people sometimes tend to reject the word of God that we are bringing to them. Is, you, we can't kill them, Jesus never said we should beat them. He said, if you go there and they don't accept, you dust the soul of your feet and go out. It is better that the blood of these people are not required off your hand than it is required off your hand, praise the Lord.
Yes, the watchman, the watchman kind of thing, yes? You must talk with the microphone, sir, please.
Praise the Lord. I want to say that your character, your behaviour as a believer can be a what? Can be a barrier. Uh, oftentimes, sometimes, the way some of our ACCF brethren we, we behave, sometimes tends to draw some people away from AC. For instance, maybe you see a sister that maybe, that was the first day of the sister coming to SCCF, maybe somebody brought her to SCCF. And probably the way she was dressing is not our standard. You see that sometimes the way the leaders will handle it, will make, that girl will not come back to the fellowship again. We are not saying you should condone evil, but there is a way you can handle someone, eh? Even the, the person is wrong, the person will listen and try to learn. For instance, you may go out for an evangelism and you want to preach to someone and you start by condemning the person, trying to tell the person that he, if he doesn't repent, that he will go to hell. I don't know what I am trying to get what I'm saying. There's a place, there's a way you can reach out to people. There are some persons that they will tell you, if it's this person, I will not go to that fellowship. For the fact that this sister, this brother is in that fellowship, I will not go. Why? Because of character. You might be a genuinely born again Christian, oh, but you lack character. And it matters a lot. It could be in your hostel, it could be in your lodge. Do you get? For the fact that that your character is not showcasing what you are portraying. It can be a hindrance, praise the Lord.
Um, after him, daddy will now say, so.
One of the main barrier to this church mandate is Satan. Now, this is the main reason why, when you preach to someone, you need to pray for that person. So that the word that you preach to this very person doesn't fall all on the way. Because when you preach to someone, the person may go out, and other factors, all the person, other theories will now come into the person mind, and the person will now throw away that very word that you gave to the person. Okay, let just, for example, you preach to someone to stop hearing in the sense of cruelty. And then the person goes out and then theories of that, that is a choice, may throw out that word. And then the person forget that anything that is, any choice that is above Christ, is not, is not worth it.
Okay, yes.
Uh, praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
I'm citing from where he just mentioned Satan. Uh, uh, I'm also, I'm citing what he said. I want to tell us, try to balance some, since it's not of experience. Uh, sometimes, you see raising your voice or telling somebody, if you don't repent, you go to hell. Sometimes it's not bad. It's not bad. It may be out of how you have been led by the spirit of God. If the spirit of God tell you to do that, please do it. Don't find any other charisma, any other method to paint it. If the spirit of God is letting you, tell this person, if you don't repent, you will die. Tell that person completely with red eye, maybe set a knee that red eye to disappear from that person's life. Tell that person, because that, this happened to me. There's one of our sisters in the fellowship then, in those days. Everybody came to her and be pleading, they were pleading with her, ah, sister, forgive this thing now, don't do this thing, don't do this thing, don't do this thing. She, she was adamant on her decision. She said, I will not come to fellowship again, this is, this is, this is. So I, that thing, I, I, I didn't know what was happening. The only thing I discovered was our sister stopped coming to fellowship. But she happened to be my cosmet. Immediately we get into the class, I was provoked in the spirit. I called her, I started cursing her, only, I started cursing her. I started cursing her, talking to her abnormally. After everything, she started crying. She wept and cried. Me, I was afraid, oh, I became afraid immediately. Do you know, immediate, uh, next fellowship, I saw her in the fellowship. Later she came to me and told me that she had not heard the word of God, like I spoke to her. That people have been telling her all this thing, telling her, but she refused. But how I spoke to her, she became extremely afraid, and she had no other option than to bow. So once God directs you to do whatever thing, do it, it may be the only option and the only method to solve that problem, praise the Lord.
Hallelujah. So any other person, yes?
Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. Another thing that can be a barrier to this church mandate is fear. Um, it should, uh, by the grace of God, we are not experiencing much persecution here as the ones seen in the northern side. But who knows if Jesus carries and then the killings of Christians and other things begins to come down here. Are we going to be afraid to still proclaim Christ? So fear, fear of persecution, fear of death can also be a barrier, praise God.
Praise the Lord. Um, I think from Acts of the Apostles, chapter twenty, verse twenty-four. I'll now read that place. Um, apostle was saying, some said, I don't, I don't count my life of any value any longer. So I think one of the, um, barriers to this mandate is that the church, let me say, we love ourselves so much. We don't want to go out and do something extra, praise the Lord. We just want to keep on praying ourselves, you're focusing, anything I'm going to do, let it be about myself, let me ensure that I'm growing. Um, I'm investing my time to ensure that my spiritual life is going where, everything about me is going where, we just like ourselves, praise. I don't know whether we get it. So we don't want to go out of the bus and do something extra, praise the Lord. And in regards to what our sister said, fear too, some people are afraid, they'll be like, I'm, is, is, there's some places you can go to, you are not, you cannot preach the gospel freely. So because of that fear, you hold your life in high esteem, you so much love yourself, you can't go out and preach and fulfill that mandate, praise the Lord.
I want to also talk about unpreparedness, unpreparedness. You did not prepare, you want to go and talk about Jesus, how? Unpreparedness may be a long term thing and also can be a short term thing. Unpreparedness may be you are not growing. You are not growing according to the timeframe God has given to you. When you reach there, you cannot, the thing is that you must grow to be more effective in, um, so winning. Cause I know how I used to talk to people about Jesus when I was in year one. It's not the same with how I talk to people about Jesus now. So there must be growth. So if you are not growing, you will Christian at level one in year one. Level two, you not even enter level two of your Christianity. You are still in level one, by final year, you are in level one point five, how? So you must prepare, and also when you are, um, there prepared, read your Bible. Know what God's message is, so that when you reach somebody, you can give them. Also prayers are part, um, part of this preparedness. Prayer, someone, um, mentioned, he said, before you tell somebody about, um, tell somebody about Jesus, tell Jesus about the person. That was when I had that for the first time, like it tossed my life unusually. Say, before you open your mouth and tell somebody, um, Jesus does this, Jesus does that. Go to Jesus and tell Jesus, I want to tell you about this person. This person is, I, I wish that this person comes to your light. Bring this person to your light. And by the time you go to tell the person, it looks like you have praised, the person will move button. The person will be following you sheepishly, you be like, ha ha. So before we tell people about Jesus, tell Jesus about them, pray. Another thing I want to also talk about is, um, the place of procrastination. Procrastination, aye, there's one that almost wanted to deal with me now, that, um, some set of persons I wanted to talk to. Like I now said, okay, let me leave it, let me leave it, they have gone for holiday now. I've left it. When you are pushing, oh yeah, listen. And I know that this person actually would benefit so much from this salvation message. Procrastination, and I know it's one of the thing that has dealt with Christians. They'll say, eh, can't happen, oh yeah, ah, unwa yeah now, okay, quit eh. So let me leave it, we don't need to procrastinate, hit it now. Hit it now. So that's that. I want to take one more contribution so that we would, yes, sorry.
Praise God. Other barriers to this is, when you, when you seek the things of the word, worldly things, is a barrier to the church mandate. When you start seeking, you see others, they are famous, you want to become famous, you try to seek that thing. It becomes a barrier. Then another thing is lack of courage, if you are not courageous, it's a, it's a barrier to you being, coming out to even talk to people. When you say that I cannot do this, just exhibit that boldness you have, praise God.
Okay, um, I just wanted to add something to what our daddy said about hitting people. Just you see someone in fellowship, you don't even know the person, who the person is, you are already hitting. One of the problem is that the church is our problem. Somebody would see an SU member in your fellowship, living another kind of life and come to that fellowship the way you saw another SU person inside that fellowship. And then you are not telling this person, don't do this thing. Imagine that kind of a thing. So even the church used to, um, the Bible said, eh, um, in, in, a, a nation against themselves would definitely fall, if a people rise against themselves. See, eh, one sister, um, um, I, I, I invited to SCCF. Told me that, immediately she came to SCCF. This is an appeargo no matter everything, she saw what she saw in SCCF and she knew what she will have to do in SCCF, they know. They know, anybody who comes to SCCF two times withdraws a, to go. You know, but immediately you come into SCCF, by the time you look around and you see you are the only person. You don't need angels to preach to you, that this is who these people are. But the thing is that some persons in fellowship are being hypocritical. And by the time they have caught them outside, and then they see them inside, and now they are handling both microphone, doing things, and nobody is paying attention to them. They'll be like, eh, it's me that everyone wants to use and learn work. So we need to be more realistic with ourselves, living for God as fellowship members, if not, it would be a barrier. When somebody comes in, by the time they feel the presence of God and see what is, what seed you have sown to get the presence of God, they will also do that, because that's what will attract them. So let us start living out the life, because if we don't live out the life, it will be a barrier. So we should not come and, um, chase people out of the fellowship with our so-called, um, we want to be, we want to claim, we want to claim. Live out the life. Nobody will come and see that you are the only person that is away from what everybody is, and will stay there and say, yes, come measure why you, eh, it's no, it does not happen that way. So God will help us. Let's see, what rewards awaits us when Christ returns? We have like fifteen minutes. If you finish this question, we now get open contributions. I say it's better we have extra time than less. So we have open contributions, we keep contributing until they tell us it's time up. Okay, hope you like it that way. Yes, so what are the rewards awaits us? Corinthians nine twenty-four verse twenty-seven, please, I know that you have read it, from the passage you've read. Can you give your contributions? Corinthians nine twenty-four, twenty-seven, Revelations two ten. Um, yes, you will talk, give it to her, then she will talk. Which other person is raising their hands? There are some persons who have not said anything yet today. Divine, I know you, you will say something, yes, you will say something. Who else? Sir, you have not said anything, you say something. Who else? Sister Aginika. You've not said anything. You'll say something, okay, yes, four persons, yes?
Okay, praise God, I want to talk from Revelations two verse ten.
Okay.
From there, the reward is that we receive the crown of life and unending glorious future.
Wow, the crown of life and an unending glorious future, yes?
Um, from that, um, first Peter five four, that place says that we receive a glorious crown that will lose its brightness.
Yes, we will shine. Yes, 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 give to our brother, brother Divine.
Praise God, five minutes more, five minutes.
Um, according to second Timothy four sixteen, um, six to eight, say that we receive the crown of righteousness. That's after we have done all the works on earth, we will see the crown of righteousness at last.
Five minutes more, so if you're in the class, start summarizing.
Yes, sir, say something.
Five minutes more, please, if you're in your classes, start summarizing.
Is blessed is the man that endured temptation, for when he is tired, he shall receive the crown of life, which the Lord have promised to them that love him.
So, and the word is that just the, the crown of life, like.
According to first Peter chapter five verse four, it says that he will give to us a crown of glory that will never fade away, so it's an everlasting reward.
The crown of righteousness. I want to ask, if you see somebody you brought to Jesus doing fine, how will you feel? Kai, Kai, how will you feel? Imagine that person that is doing fine, will now say, hey, there was something they did in our fellowship. Go and stand behind the person that brought you to fellowship. Hey, some, some people had people standing behind them, some people, there are people did not come to fellowship, so they are lost. Nobody stood behind them. Listen, but I were like, what if I have a very long train behind me? What if your testimony is that this sister that is doing fine, Kai, that reward only, that satisfaction that this person that I'm seeing here, who are you part of their story? Kai, I wish and I want to believe that I will be part of someone's story. That someone will want to say, thank you, Jesus. He said, thank you, Jesus, for brought power. There's no better reward as that. There's no better reward as that. There are many rewards. I have preached to someone like this, I send their own credit a lot immediately, I've received reward here on earth. I said I preached to someone just now. And then the money entered immediately, like, I'm not, I'm not saying this thing. Like, I know the person, but I've not spoken to the person about Jesus before. And after speaking to the person about Jesus, the person said this here, and I, I was like, why did you do this? I said, I said, I said, I don't need it, I needed it, but I was like, trying to show, you know, um, say, I don't, I don't, why, why, it's not necessary. The person said, thank you for today, I say, ah, all this is, so you will be surprised at what you enjoy here. I will ask a question to some persons, I said, what if I was a courtist and God had destined me to meet you, my dear? If, since I'm not meeting you, since I met you with evangelism, maybe what I would have met you with is with a gun. And I'll collect your phone and recuse me. That's it. There are people God has wired around you that you should meet. If you meet them the right way, though, as in they will forever bless you. Oh, I wish we know the, 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 the savoury taste that comes with evangelism so winning. We would want to do it with all of you. Start somewhere. I know some of us, our fear is, how can we start? The way to start is by starting. There is no other way, go to somebody and tell somebody about Jesus. The way I started preaching was that I made mistake and opened my mouth to some sister, I saw sisters only handling our year ones, and I told them, I want to also be part of, they say, okay, preach today. Ah, I just gave my life to Christ, my dear, and then you are now telling me that day, that day to preach. And I already opened my mouth, anything that you want me to do, then they gave me that anything today, that was the first time. I was shaking when I was doing that. And see, use people to learn work. You will learn work by practicing. You get better by practicing. Tell somebody about Jesus, he not receive, tell another person. At the end of the day, you will get the hack. You understand the way to put mouth and you tell somebody about Jesus and need to work, not by closing your mouth, God will help us. Is there any other person who wants to say something? Want to say something, or we should conclude and go? Okay, we conclude and go. Conclusion. Conclusion. You can't afford to be uninvolved in this mentality, you can't, of the church, which is God's heartbeat. The state of the global habits is illustrated as a sheep without a shepherd, and ripe fruits without a harvest hour. They are helpless and hopeless, waiting for us to urgently penetrate their hearts with the gospel of Christ. Christ is returning soon, any soul that does not have the Savior is doomed to hell. They will cry and weep eternally, do not let your loved ones go into eternal damnation, maranata. Let's say our memory verse together, our memory verse is taken from Matthew twenty-four verse fourteen. And this gospel of the kingdom will be preached in the whole world, as a testimony to all nations, and then the end will come. Amen, God help us, let's bow our heads as we pray. Lord, give us the zeal to live for me, and to be saved for me, amen. All his wondrous compassion and purity. Oh, thou Spirit divine, all my nature refined. Beauty of Jesus is me. All the way to Calvary, he went for me. He went for me. He went for me. All the way to Calvary, he went for me. And now, please save me free. All the way to Calvary, went for us. He went for us. He went for me. All the way to Calvary, he went for me. He died to save me free. Hallelujah, all the way to Calvary, he went for me. Jesus went for all, he asked us to wait for all that. All the way to Calvary, he went for me. He died to save me free.
Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Can we clap our hands together for ourselves? Can we put our hands together for our teachers? God is faithful. We are grateful for this privilege given to each and every one of us to study at the feet of Jesus. Today, we, we looked into the church mandate. But a special grace of God, we will finish this study. I want seven persons from different classes to give us within a nutshell their benefits, what do you benefited from the study? As regards to behold is coming, I want seven persons from different classes who can boldly tell us what he or she benefited from the lesson, that can also serve as an encouragement to us as we wait for the return of our master. Are there people like that? I want to give seven persons chance to say something on this study. Number one, who is coming? Please, can I see you out, if you want to say something from that lesson? Don't allow anything to be a barrier to you, maybe God wants you to say something, you, you have to come. Seven persons, number one, number two, please start coming, number three, start coming, number four, number five, please start, start coming, facts. Remain two persons, number six, remain one person. Remain one person, okay, two of you come. Okay, please, one, one minute, I have only ten minutes to do this.
Hallelujah. Okay, um, talking about the topic, the church mandate. Amen. Okay, um, I want to speak on the point, the question of discussion that says, what should be our message to the dying souls? Now, I want to also bring in a sin here, you discover that someone who is in the dying bed, one thing that you know, no matter the type of drug you are giving to the person, he doesn't care. What he knows is that he needs something that if he takes it, it will restore him back to life.
Let's pause, hello? Which class?
Class eight.
Okay, go ahead, please, say your name and your class.
Okay, my name is John Akachi Prosper.
Please be fast, go straight to the point.
So as I said earlier, he needs something that will revive him back to life, now what are you to give to a sinner or dying souls? The Bible made us to know that Jesus is the light, and when he came, the people that sat in darkness saw a great light. So when you give someone Christ, you have given him something that will revive him back to life, because he has been in darkness, and you have given him a light which can be a rescue to his soul. So what I learnt is that you have to give light to people who are already in darkness and dying souls, and Christ is the light, hallelujah.
Amen, thank you so much. There's a great benefit. Go ahead.
My name is Satchina Root, um, I studied at class twelve, so I want to also talk about the message we are to preach. Whenever we go for evangelism, or when we want to preach the word of God, let's not center it on ourselves. Who we are preaching is Christ, not ourselves, let's preach about the love of Christ. You see many people, when they're going for evangelism, they will start condemning the souls. God did not give us the power to go and condemn, but to save that soul, and you can save the person by telling him or her about the love of Christ. Let the person know that Jesus loves him, even as a sinner, and is interested in serving that soul. And another one I want to talk about is from the effective tools and factors for this mandate. Let's please work on ourselves, your character, the way you talk, the way you dress. Don't just start picking your Bible and going for evangelism, when you know fully well that the way you live your life is nothing to drive home about. Most of us that call ourselves believers, our brothers and sisters, when we talk, when we, the way we act, people begin to question our salvation. So I want to encourage us, please, try to work on yourself, praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. My name is Onyemle Glad from class eight, I want to talk about, um, evangelism being a warfare. Evangelism is not just something that we do physical, you can go for evangelism a million and one times, and yet you won't win souls. There's difference between evangelism and soul winning, so we should not just evangelize, we should also win souls, work on yourself, your spirituality. Try pray before you God for the evangelism, praise the Lord.
Yes, and praise the Lord. Um, my name is Imam Alimeka from class eight. I'm discussing on how to get the message for evangelism. In first John chapter one, first John chapter one, if you read down to verse three, it say that that which we have received, we declare unto you. So we cannot over emphasize the need for you to work on yourself, it say that which you have received, we deliver unto you. So what we receive from God directly is what we preach out. I look at an example from Ezra chapter seven verse ten, and it says, for Ezra had prepared his heart to seek the law of the Lord, and to do it, and to teach it to Israel. So when we are reading the Bible, we read that, we do it, we read that, we preach it, when we are in our quiet time, we are in our quiet time that we will grow, and when we grow, we also teach others to grow, praise the Lord.
Okay, um, praise the Lord. My name is Alphos Erastus Chisom, from, um, class four. Okay, what I want to, my, or my own contribution is from, um, the question five, you say, are there barriers in to church mandates? So, um, we discussed and talked about some factors or some barriers to this mandate, which one of them happens to be fair, fair. Um, some of them may be inferiority complex, but then my point of emphasis on those barriers is taken from Matthew chapter twenty-eight. Matthew chapter twenty-eight, the last place there says, in verse twenty-six, teaching them to observe all things whatsoever I have commanded you, and the law I am with you. So my emphasis on that barriers over this mandate is that, as students, as campus students and Christians, there is, when Jesus opened his mouth and say, I am with you, that means whatever we need for this mandate has been made available, be it power, be it utterances, it has been made available. The Bible says that heaven and earth shall pass away, but the word of Jesus cannot pass away, so everything we need to make this mandate a success, God has made them available, praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. My name is Chibukem Igono, and study ten, I'll be contributing from, um, question four. Um, the question there is, what are the factors, tools, and methods that can help us effectively and efficiently fulfill this mandate? And then this question alone brought up a lot of things in my mind, and telling me that there are tools, there are factors, and there are methods to effectively and efficiently fulfill this mandate, some of them were listed in my class, and one of them was prayer. Prayer is a tool, um, we have empathy, if you have empathy for the souls, is something that is going to spur you to go out there to win souls. And then we not really talk much about the method, and I intend to go home after this conference and begin to, um, pray about, and also research on how to effectively do this work well, because if we discover that in the Bible, when Jesus encountered different persons, he did not use the same method, should I say, he went, he met them like, some via conversation, via through parables, through different means to effectively reach out to their point of need, praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. Think SUCF. Pray SUCF. At SUCF. I want to contribute from the place where they say, where is the place of SUCF Nigeria, in the prophetic agenda and soul targets and winning? So this place, I see that it is there for everyone that is saved, so far as you have given your life to Christ. So far as you have surrendered your, you have surrendered first your life to Jesus, and you have received Jesus in your life, and begin to live a life that pleases God. This mandate is left for me and you to take care of it. Jesus, God is giving us this mandate to take care of it, to go and preach the word of God everywhere, even in our classmates, even to our classmates, our, our fellow department mates, our courages, even in our school, we can pick it up to go and preach the word of God. So I say, SUCF member, you know that our responsibility is also to go and preach the word of God in schools. So let's take it as our responsibility, and so we are doing it, may God bless us in Jesus's name, amen.
Praise the Lord. My name is Joshua Yama, I'm in class four. My benefits for us today is, is about evangelism. So evangelism is not only going out to preach the word of God also, SUCF members, even in your schools, preach the gospel of God even in your departments also, because when you do, when you preach in your departments, and also give them what suffered device, not only preaching only, your characters, your behaviors, everything inside you can make someone in your department to repent. Not only going out and preaching, shouting, Jesus loves you, Jesus did this one, no, you can, you can change your mentality because of your character, because of your behaviors, people around you will also have repentance, as you do that, may God bless you.
Praise the Lord. Okay, my name is Ikachimirakun from study six. I'll be contributing from.
Speak out.
Okay, praise the Lord, my name is Ikachimirakun, study six, I'll be contributing from, uh, question four. Okay, as much as we are going for evangelism with zeal and power, you know, ask him, and so we should also have knowledge. Please, if you are going for evangelism, don't go alone, please. And you have heard so many cases where someone went for evangelism, you know, soul winning, and he ended up that was one that was won instead. Please, even beyond evangelism, why didn't follow up and, you know, cancel him, please? Be, you know, stay in a place where the devil will see a room to, eh, attack, you have heard so many cases, somebody going for evangelism and want to happen. So no matter the kind of fire you have on your head, the kind of ask you, I can if evangelism, please have a small knowledge.
Put your hands together for our brethren, hallelujah. Before I say the final thing, is anybody that has a question? Any question in the house, among us? I just want us to entertain only two questions, and then I will round up, okay, come, fast. One person, okay, come. Teachers, let's, let's pay attention to these questions, and then we, we answer them. Please fast, your class?
Class six.
Six, please, fast.
Okay, my question is, according to first Corinthians chapter fourteen, verse thirty-three and thirty-four, he said, the Lord is not an author of confusion, the women should be silent in the church, and first Timothy two verses twelve, I permit no woman to teach or to have authority over men, and I want to ask, in, uh, on question, on question four, how can women or females fulfill this mandate in the church today?
Okay, you're talking about women evangelism? Uh, is it, are you asking how to reach out?
Sir, my question is based on these scriptures, these scriptures, first Corinthians.
Did we have anything like that?
Yes, first Corinthians.
Maybe it's a wrong quotation.
First Corinthians chapter fourteen, verse thirty-three and thirty-four. And first Timothy two, verse twelve. So, they opposed condemned women, females from preaching in the church, and second Timothy, Paul also wrote that women have no authority over men, and now, I want to ask, as females, how can we exercise this church mandate in our world today?
Okay, okay, praise the Lord. Uh, is anybody that want to help us attend the questions? If you understand things that Paul is saying based on what, but I'm looking at it, it's going out of the context, maybe it's a wrong, so, but mommy want to say something.
Praise the Lord, I don't think that thing she read is in our text today, did you see it in, among the texts we read today, in the Bible study? No, no, I mean the text you quoted about women being silent, it's not part of the text, so it's out of context. But I want to say, even on that, you don't do evangelism inside the church. When we are talking about evangelism, we mean go out and make disciples of all nations, like we discuss in our various groups, you can, you can come early in the morning, before a lecturer comes, when the students are already seated, you preach there. The, the Bible didn't say you shouldn't preach there, and you can also preach in your room, in your hostel, where that's, to your roommates. So you can fulfill it, that, forget about that one, we are not, that's a topic of controversy, I don't think we should discuss.
Okay, thank you so much, Ma. I want to say something, our teacher, our teacher want to contribute to that, actually, I don't want to go into, it's a little bit sensitive, okay, go ahead, sir.
Praise the Lord. Please, uh, I wouldn't want us to.
Die the matter.
Uh, just, uh, try to maybe die this matter like this, because I think this, this matter have been bothering her.
Okay.
Uh, although she refer it, the, the Bible quotation is, uh, doesn't have to do with what we did today.
Okay.
But the fact there is, if you are a wife, and you discover that your husband is there in the church, talking, there's no need for you to start talking, your husband is here, do your own walk and go, when you go home, you may advise your husband, so that next time your husband will do more. So there's no need for you to come to the church and be arguing over church dogma, church policy, and church whatever thing. Uh, after all, even in the church, you have your own way of talking. Even in the youth, you are there doing your work as evangelist, choir, you are there preaching, there's no way, no, no how pastor will tell you, don't do this or don't do that. So where you have been mapped out, and you have been, you have your duty to play your role, do it, and forget about that issue that have been trying to kill us, praise the Lord.
Uh, I also want to. Uh, if you read Corinthians, first Corinthians eleven.
Uh, if you read Corinthians, first Corinthians eleven, the same Paul who said that, and where you read, said in verse four or five, say, but every woman who prays or prophesies with her head uncovered the suns her head. For that is one and the same as if her head were shaved. For if a woman is not covered, let her, and so on. So he here acknowledge that a woman can do some, uh, services. Professing, praying, even in congregation. Are you getting what I'm saying? So the Bible does not say that women should not be part of public worship or say something. Are you getting what I'm saying?
Please, I, I would like us so narrow, there is a statement he, she made. Does the woman forbid in evangelism, right? Uh, okay. Please. I, I hope you are getting all the information. Sir, you want to say something on that? Okay, before the second questions, we, we stop.
All right, I think our daughter that made the last statement has actually made a point, but I want to just wrap it up. You know, there was a question that was asked Jesus by the Pharisees and the scribes. They came to him and said that Moses said that anyone who is caught in adultery, there should be a file of divorcement. That was the law that Moses made. So the response that Jesus gave to them was, in the beginning, it was not so, that Moses made that law because of the hardness of their hearts. Now, in this context, Paul actually made that statement because of the state of thing in the church as of that time. There were commission, commotions, women were just taking anyhow, they didn't know their pattern to talk, they didn't know their way to relate what they have to the church. So in order to curb that matter, Paul had to say that for now, women, if you have anything bothering you, you have anything to say, talk to your husband at home. But it is not insinating that women should be banned from speaking in the church. Hallelujah.
Okay, praise the Lord. I'm sorry because of our time. Let me set this as a conclusion to every one of us, including myself, that the church mandate is an injunction given to each and every one of us to carry out, whether you like it or not. It's not for a particular set of people, it's for us. If we all are desiring to see the coming of our master Jesus to rapture us, we must engage ourselves, involve in making sure that his coming is the reality. And how do we do that? Is by engaging ourselves in this evangelism. And not just in evangelism, by standing and telling people that indeed that Jesus is coming back again. And they must accept Jesus as their Lord and personal Savior and presenting Christ as the core message. Thereby, lives will be transformed. I want to encourage us. May God help us in Jesus's name.
Praise God. Praise the Lord. Um, it's time for our prayers. Okay, um.